Hello.
Hey, good evening. I'd like to call the Order of the December, excuse me, November 20th, 2023 workshop. First of all, we have, before we get into it, this is a joint city council, school committee workshop. And just so we know everybody, if we could start around the room and give some introductions, we're gonna start with, off to my right.
Pamela Albert, School Committee at Large.
Brian Burnett, School Committee, Ward Four.
Steve Milk, City Council, Ward Three.
Belinda Gary, Auburn City Councilor at Large.
Leroy Walker, Ward Five, City Councilor.
Jason Lebec, Mayor.
Pat Gardier, School Committee at Large.
Rick Whiting, City Council, Ward One.
Ryan Hawes, City Council, Ward Two.
Dana Staples, City Council at Large.
Joe Moran, City Council, Ward Four.
Timothy Gill, Runyon Kirsten Mallett.
And now we'll start off on our first agenda item, which is our annual audit report from the folks at RKO. We have one other person here.
Dan Poizan, Ward Five, School Committee.
So, hi there. I am here to talk with Tim about the 2022 audit, so the year ending June 30th, 2022. So, things went very well. A big thank you to Jill Eastman and Mark Conrad and all their staff. It was a pleasure working with them. We actually finished the audit in August, so we're just kind of getting to that point where we're talking about it. I have a little presentation here, which I'm gonna go through. And as I do, so if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me at any point. So, the first graph here shows a summary of the audit results, so just kind of an overview of things. In terms of the opinion on the financial statements, the city, which includes the school department, received an unmodified opinion, which means the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, or is a clean opinion, which is what you want to see. In addition to the financial statement audit, we also performed two separate compliance audits. So, first of all, we performed an audit in accordance with government auditing standards. It's what we usually call a yellow book audit. And here, we consider the city's internal controls over the financial reporting process, so we look at all the procedures that are in place that help to ensure that the year-end balances are materially correct. We also performed tests of compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements. And in terms of that yellow book audit, we didn't have any significant deficiencies, but we did have material weakness for grant account reconciliations. Tim's actually gonna go through that in a few minutes once we get to the compliance report. There are also a few other kind of general recommendations that are listed here. Tim's also gonna talk about that once we get to the management letter. And then also, again, in 2022, because the city and the school expended more than $750,000 worth of federal grant proceeds, we performed an audit in accordance with Uniform Guidance, so this is a federal compliance audit. In 2022, the city and the school expended about $11.3 million, so a very significant amount. And this is a program or project-specific audit that we do, so we kind of vary the different federal programs that we look at. In 2022, we looked at or audited three separate programs. We looked at the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program. We tested the community development block grant. We tested Essar, or the elementary and secondary school relief program, and we tested the special education cluster, which is what's usually called the local entitlement program. There was one finding related to the CDBG program, the community development block grant, and Tim's gonna go through that once we get to the compliance report. So, that's just kind of an overview of things. I'm gonna start to get into some of the financial results for the year. And this presentation is broken down in a certain way. We're gonna talk about the citywide activity, so it's gonna include not only the city, but the school department. And the last four graphs, or three graphs, are gonna talk about just the school department. So, this first graph shows general fund balance. And we take your fund balance and we kind of carve it up into three, or four different categories. And I'm just briefly gonna describe what's included in each one of those. So, first of all, there's non-spendable fund balance. That represents resources which can't be spent because they're not in a spendable form. They can't be easily converted to cash. So, what we're talking about here are long-term receivables and prepaid expenditures. Then, we have restricted fund balance. This comprises resources with constraints placed on their use externally. So, these are amounts that have strings attached to them. And in the context of the citywide financial statements, what we're talking about is the general fund balance for the school department. Because the school department is supported through state education subsidy, any amounts have to be set aside to educate your students, and so they're in that restricted category. Then, there is assigned fund balance that represents resources that are constrained by the city's intent to be used for specific purposes. So, these are amounts that the city council is setting aside. This included $875,000 set aside to balance the 2023 budget, so the following year budget. It included $1,115,000 set aside for self-insurance and about $546,000 set aside for encumbrances. Unassigned fund balance is what remains after amounts are put into the three other categories. It's essentially what's left over. In total, fund balance between 2021 and 2022 equaled about 5.1 million, or increased by about 5.1 million. So, a pretty significant increase. And we'll see some of the reasons why that happened on the next few graphs. Graph four shows general fund revenues, and this is a budget actual comparison. In total, revenues were about 4.9 million over budget. Just briefly, some of the larger variances. Intergovernmental revenues are over budget by $3,988,000 primarily due to higher-than-expected state revenue sharing and state education subsidy. And licenses and permit revenues were over budget by about $257,000 due to higher-than-expected marijuana business permits and building permits. So, just kind of an overview of what's going on with revenues for the general fund. As for expenditures, expenditures were about 5.3 million over budget. Again, some of the larger variances. General government expenditures were over budget by $1,238,000 primarily due to lower-than-expected costs related to economic and community development, as well as lower-than-expected benefit cost increases coupled with employee vacancies. Public safety expenditures were over budget by $366,000 due to overtime needed in response to numerous employee vacancies. Public services expenditures were under budget by $411,000 primarily due to staffing shortages and projects not being completed. And other appropriations were under budget by about $603,000 primarily due to lower debt service and anticipated and a budgeted but unused emergency reserve. Graph six shows unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budget. So, this is one of those metrics or measurements that we look at to determine if a community is financially healthy. We generally recommend one to two months' worth of expenditures, which equals 8.3% to 16.7%. When we do this calculation for the city as of June 30th, 2022, that percentage equaled 13.6%. So, the city's right in the range of what we usually recommend. So, that's very good. The city does have a fund balance policy, and that's to maintain unrestricted fund balance in the general fund of no less than 10% and no more than 14% of general fund budgeted expenditures. As the school department's fund balance is restricted, it's excluded from this calculation. I just wanted to point that out. Using the city's policy, the city's unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of budget for 2022 equaled 16.24%. So, you're exceeding that upper level by 2.24%, or about $2,148,000. According to the policy, this is straight from the policy, "Amounts in excess of the target shall be brought to the city council in the form of a council order before use for city council approval." I know there's been some discussion about, you know, whether or not the council wants to reappropriate that, but the amount in excess of that 14% is $2,148,000. So, I think you'll probably be having a conversation about that in the future. And then, as I mentioned previously, the last three graphs are just the school department. So, this first one shows general fund balance for the school department. Again, there are different categories of fund balance, and I'm briefly just gonna describe what's included in each one of them. So, first of all, there's non-spendable fund balance. That represents resources which can't be spent, because again, they're not in a spendable form. Specifically, what we're talking about here are prepaid expenditures. And then, there's assigned fund balance that equaled about $1,350,000, and that represents amounts designated for the subsequent year budget, so amounts to balance the 2023 budget. And unassigned fund balance is what remains after amounts are put into the other categories, and that equaled about $5,630,000 at year end. In total, the fund balance for the school department increased by about four, almost 4.8 million, so a very significant increase in 2022. This next graph shows revenues for the general fund for the school department. In total, revenues were about $2.2 million over budget. Again, quickly, some of the larger variances. Intergovernmental revenues were over budget by $1,926,000, and that was primarily due to higher-than-expected state education subsidy. And other revenues were over budget by $340,000 primarily due to the unbudgeted sale of laptops back to Apple. And then, lastly, in terms of expenditures for the school department general fund, expenditures were about 3.4 million over budget, I'm sorry, under budget. Regular instruction expenditures were under budget by $1,014,000 primarily due to hiring new teachers at lower rates and teacher vacancies. And special education instruction expenditures were under budget by $2,142,000 due to lower-than-expected out-of-district placement costs and teacher vacancies. So, that was just kind of a quick overview of your financial information. I'm gonna pass it over to Tim. He's gonna talk about the finding and the material weakness and the recommendations.
Do I have to list the whole time? Okay. So, as Casey alluded to, if you want to jump back to the slide number two, just let me put that up there for him. We do two separate kind of compliance audits. One is with under government auditing standards. And one of the primary things we do under government auditing standards is a risk assessment procedures and testing of internal controls. So, we test internal controls, and we do some additional procedures to gain an understanding of where there might be some weaknesses in the procedures, and then we direct our testing to those riskier areas. One of the byproducts of that process is that we're able to offer recommendations and put them into these categories that Casey went over. The material weakness is the most significant, most severe category that we can put something into. It's something that you really want to pay attention to and implement corrective action as soon as possible. For this year, we have the material weakness of the grant account reconciliations. And this relates to both the MDOT grants and the CDBG grants, home grants, things through HUD. What we were finding is that there's lots of inputs into those grants. Some things are maintained in Excel spreadsheets. Some things are maintained in the Munis accounting system on the city side. Some things are maintained in the pro-fund system on the school side. Some things are maintained in the HUD system, with the IDIS system that they require you to put stuff into. And then, there's also a mortgage office software that tracks the loaned on the CDBG program. So, all this information gets entered in multiple times into multiple systems, and ultimately, what it all has to reconcile to is the Munis system, because that's kind of the master system and the master accounting procedures that tracks everything. And so, we were finding some discrepancies between the systems. We had to go through the process of reconciling them and offering up some pretty significant journal entries to correct everything, to make sure that the information reported in Munis and in the financial statements was in accordance and matched all the subsidiary ledgers. So, what we would recommend in that process is implementing some ideally monthly reconciliation procedures to reconcile the grant receivables, the grant revenues, looking at the expenditures, tying it all to the underlying documentation, and making sure that, you know, each system kind of lines up and talks to each other. So, implementing a monthly reconciliation process is the key thing. You know, you might want to push that out to quarterly or semi-annual procedures. That's better than nothing, but ideally, you want to do it monthly so you can catch things in a more timely manner and fix them and correct them, because any time you let it go longer than a month or a couple of months, it gets harder to investigate, because you're looking at more transactions. You're looking at a bigger timeframe, so it's harder to isolate what went wrong and when. The next level down in the comments that we have are significant deficiencies. We didn't have any of those to report. And then, we had just kind of other comments. These are things that we wanted to bring to your attention that are less severe, but they're really something that you should pay attention to, to improve operating efficiency and improve effectiveness of your controls. One of the big things on this category is the city accounting software and school accounting software reconciliation. Similar to the previous comment, these are two different systems that have to kind of talk to each other and agree to each other. It's a similar process that we recommend implementing reconciliations on a monthly basis to make sure that what's recorded in the school system gets reported up into the Munis software on the city side, so that that can be used to build the budget, to build the tax assessment, and so that they're building that type of information and those tax assessments on accurate information that can be more actionable. One of the other comments that we have in this category is the school lunch cash receipts. So, every year, we test a random sample of cash receipts in various city departments and categories. This year, in 2022, we selected the school lunch cash receipts. Out of the 40 transactions tested, we found a few that were, where there were processing fees for online credit cards and things like that, that were being netted into the transactions, which really should be broken out and reported as expenditures. We found deposits weren't necessarily being done in a timely manner. We love to see cash and checks received being deposited as soon as possible, ideally the same day. We understand that sometimes that's not feasible. So, really, we would like to see it at most within one week, and we found some instances where that didn't happen the way we would like. And then, there was also the recommendation included in that to implement a secondary review. So, we found that some of the kitchen managers or some of the cashiers in the schools were kind of just counting their cash, putting it in a bag, and then it would get deposited. There was no secondary review to reconcile that information to the point-of-sale system, to reconcile it to the deposits, or any kind of just, you know, cash count procedure. So, with any control procedure, we always recommend a secondary review process to eliminate errors, to eliminate the instance of fraud or anything like that. And then, the last other comment that we had were accrued payroll procedures. Specifically, this was on the school side. Every year, there's a salary accrual to accrue salaries that are earned but not yet paid as of year to end, year end. So, there's two pieces to this. There's a summer salary accrual. Teachers earn all their wages during the year, but then get paid out during the summer. So, that piece was done correctly. It's the hourly employees that weren't properly recognized. So, what we recommend in this instance is that management go through at year end and identify the hourly employees that have earned time near year end, and go through and implement a reconciliation process and identification process, rather, so that those people can properly be identified and accrued back and the proper reporting is done, and the journal entry is made before we come in and do the audit. Before I go on to the Uniform Guidance stuff, which is the federal grant stuff, is there any questions on those comments? All right? I'll keep going. So, the second part of our kind of compliance audit is the reports required by the Uniform Guidance. This is where we test the federal programs. As Casey mentioned, if you have over $750,000 in expenditures under federal grants in any one year, it triggers what we call a single audit. And so, we go through, again, we do a similar risk assessment process to determine, okay, what programs are we gonna test, because we don't test every single program during the year. We would be full-time employees if we did that. So, we look at it. We risk assess the programs that you spent your federal expenditures under, and we figure out which ones we're gonna test. We tested four this year, looking at different compliance requirements, like, did you spend something under an allowable cost, and was it properly approved? Did you do all your control procedures, as you said? There's certain non-financial performances that we test as well, making sure you did reporting properly. So, the only finding that we had during that process was on the CDBG grant, the community development block grant. And this was somewhat related to the material weakness that I spoke of earlier, where there's a lot of accounting systems and different underlying documentation, different systems in place. And what we found was that there was inaccurate reporting done for the CDBG program during the year. Specifically, there's a PR 26 financial report that's part of the annual CAPR that's done every year, and then there's quarterly cash-on-hand reports done as well. We have, we had trouble tying that information back to the underlying source documentation. So, again, the really, the key result of that is that we suggest implementing a reconciliation process, again, ideally monthly, to reconcile all these systems, so that at year end, when you're going to put together this CAPR financial report that you submit to the federal agency, that information is accurate, and then it can be tied to the underlying systems. The same thing with the quarterly cash-on-hand reports. Those should all be easily traceable back to the underlying systems. And that is it for the recommendations. Again, is there any questions on that process?
Anybody any questions? I think in the next, like on the school side, the finance committee's already been talking about rectifying some of these systems. So, from your initial meeting that we had, we're already starting to move that ball forward a little bit with some good outcomes. Anything on the city?
Do we feel like what's been going on with CDBG has been rectified?
So, we are currently in the process of testing it for the 2023 audit. We haven't gathered enough documentation to tell you one way or the other that that's been rectified. Part of the issue in the previous year was definitely turnover personnel as well. I didn't mention that piece, but there was some new staff in that area last year, so this year would be their second year. It's a little bit more consistent. I think things are gonna be differently ironed out a little bit.
If there's nothing else, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
With that, the school committee, that comes to close. Our jointness, but y'all can stay. You're more than happy, you know, welcome to stay. We're happy to have you. So, that's completely up to you, but if you're not, y'all can leave. Okay. Next up, we're gonna move into, which is a perfect transition, we're gonna move into discussions on our fund balance, and that's gonna lead into the American Rescue Plan Act funds. A little background on both, obviously, as we just heard from the auditors, we have in excess over our 14% of our municipal budget, overage of 2.1 million. And we also have a great audit here for ARPA. So, I'll turn it over to Phil right now to look at that, and we've got also a list of projects for consideration. So, Phil?
Thanks, Mayor, Council. Rita, you want to join us at the table? So, I know we have it as fund balance and then ARPA. So, let me just briefly just, I'll share with you the number again that Casey had provided you. So, if you were to bring the fund balance to the 14%, then it's $2,148,283. That's the amount to bring you to the 14%. Not much more I think I'm going to discuss regarding fund balance. That is what it is. Those books are closed. You have the amount. And then, what we'll do is we'll talk a little bit about ARPA, and then we'll talk, you have a handout that Rita provided regarding some ARPA allocations. What I asked Rita to do was put this in a, in a format where you could see what's, you know, you have, I believe that after, you know, depending on what takes place with the vote tonight regarding the public safety wellness program, but if that was to be approved, then you've currently approved 49 projects within ARPA that Rita is tracking through the grant management SAM.gov software that she needs to do with, yeah, the, trying to remember which department, but I think it's all under, is it DOJ? No, we'll get it. But it's, so it's the SAM.gov system that she's reporting and doing all the audits, internal audits with, on those 49 projects. So, we listed out the ones that are currently still in progress. That means these are projects that are underway or they've been allocated, but it's pretty certain that those funds will be used to some degree. I'm not sure if it'll be the full amount or not, but as you go through that, you'll see the different projects that you have authorized. On page two of that document, you'll see where there's two items that are listed as pending. And pending for us just means that we haven't really had discussions regarding those funds on specifically what will they be used for. One of them is the TOTLOT revitalization. There was discussions regarding, you know, what that would look like at TOTLOT. There was $50,000 that was set aside, but we really haven't because of the other projects. That one there just have not, has not got back to a further discussion. And then, the last one is the records digitizing, digitizing certain records. We had talked about this. I think there were, that's one that we're still looking at, but it's pending because we're still trying to identify workload to be able to get that completed. A lot of that has to do with documents that are in the planning department and what the planning department will make available and get taken care of. So, that way, there, we don't have a great deal of storage that's going on currently when it comes to the numerous projects and plans and things that they have. However, there's a component in there that requires some workforce, just who's doing it. And so, we're still, I say that's pending because we just haven't really ironed out a good plan on that yet. It needs to be done, but we just haven't, haven't had that time to really work that through. And then, after that, you'll see on the remaining, that remaining page and the page three, those are all the closed projects. So, several projects are completed. It does not mean that there's still not reporting that Rita's working on, so it's not necessarily closed at her level, closed as far as there's no further purchases that are being applied to those, to those accounts. That's been done. However, some of our quarterly reporting and then follow-up reporting that's required on ARPA still needs to occur on certain projects. So, those projects, there still might be. Some of that reporting might go on long into 2026, because there's certain inspections and things that needs to take place with certain ARPA funds that leads right up until 2026 and probably beyond. So, there's just a lot of layers to the requirements with the ARPA funds. So, with that said, I think at the page three of your document, you'll see what I asked Rita to provide you was, your total ARPA award was $13,545,799. The council allocations to date was $13,202,283, with a total remaining of $343,516. And then, and then if you take that remaining unallocated, we add the, again, I'm just using this as discussion, but if the $150,000 for the wellness, public safety wellness was to be used, then that brings your total remaining to $193,516. So, you take that $193,000, and then, and then the funds that were available that were closed are now being brought back for reallocation, and that totaled $712,229, which now provides you a total available of ARPA at 9,5745.025. So, I'll make sure I add that. So, those are your total, total numbers that you have to work with at this point.
So, just for clarity, what that, what you're saying is, so I'm looking at property tax homeowner relief. We allocated 700, only 320 of it got used, or 220 of it got used. So, we have 480 left that we can reallocate to other things.
That's correct. That's correct. So that was brought back into that 712,000 that you see available.
So can we just take a second before we go into proposed consideration and just really look at this document, Phil?
Sure.
Rita, have some questions? I'll start off. I've got one question here, and I'm not sure if it's counted for or not, but it didn't seem so. For example, if you look under line, our project 16, IT permitting, it looks as if there's still $55,000 left, but I don't see it carried over to available, but it is marked as closed.
It's because the funds have been encumbered, so we can't use it.
Okay, so there's, they're encumbered, so they anticipate to be spent. Those 50, okay.
Correct.
Got it. Because I just saw above that some, like for example, on premium pay, it's closed, but there's 5,238 and that's carrying over. So that's an unencumbered amount, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so closed for us means that there's no other invoicing that'll take place with that. That was funds that were already spent, but just not drawn.
Just not drawn down.
That's right. But the PO is already submitted, so.
So I will say that, well, you gotta look at this, and for me, it brings back a lot of memories of how we distributed funds. I mean, 49, put it this way, most municipalities in the state of Maine dropped all those funds on usually one or two things. Sewer pipes, pipes on the ground, that was it. They got rid of it. And there's still a surprising amount of communities that haven't figured out how to spend this yet and it's still sitting in accounts. It has to be encumbered by spring of next year and then fully expended, paid for and accounted by May of 26, correct?
December of 26.
I did have a meeting with Rachel Ferente, the director of the Maine Mill, and Rick, catch me up, you're on the board, you're my rep on the board on that one. But she said that they are ready to break ground come the spring.
Yeah, they're making tremendous progress. I don't have, I don't have the exact numbers in place, but they've done some really effective fundraising. I was frankly, a little surprised, but Rachel has done a top-notch job and they're, they are ready to go, you know?
Now she hit me up on Friday.
The contractor selected.
So I mean, that, and we bring that up because that's a huge amount of outstanding that theoretically, if they didn't encumber it by spring, that would flow back to the council. So in order for you to dispose, but you feel it's going to be, it's good. I, that's the take I got from Rachel as well.
A quick question about the CDBG accessory dwelling unit. Are we anticipating that, or it's closed now, no one else can take advantage of this, this program? Or are we anticipating anything going forward is going to be allocated to that?
So if that was to move forward, it would really have to be rewritten based on changes at the state where it just was not, it was not, no longer an incentive based on some state determination on that. So that's why we're proposing that. That comes back to the council for reallocation.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or thoughts as we go through this?
I would just say that small amount that's taken out, that's just administrative costs. When we have CDBG run any program within ARPA, CDBG funding has to be very specific. Running ARPA is not a CDBG responsibility, but they run programs. So those are the administrative costs of, that program was still stood up, applications were still designed, information was still shared. So there was an administrative cost that went to that. So that did not carry to CDBG.
A big problem with that program was, is a great example of good intent, but, and it could have been good execution. The stipulations on the money with regards that flowed down from the feds just didn't make sense, almost like a donut hole. You couldn't make more than, I believe it was 60% of the income level or LMI in order to qualify for the grant, which is substantial. But even if you qualify for the grant, a bank wouldn't give you the money because you were capped at 60% of LMI. So, okay, you know, great intent, but you couldn't actually use it because of the private banking sector. Now, I am on a committee, a legislative committee, looking at financing options for ADU specifically. And there are some good ones, but frankly, by the time they wind their way through the legislature, this won't do any good, so might as well pull it.
So if we want to move now to the project for consideration, I think this is, you know, what we did internally was take a look at some potential projects that we know are coming, that will be coming up before you in CIP. And if there's an opportunity to try to offset some future CIP costs that's been allocated in here, and then some other future impacts that we know that might be taking place. The first one was, you know, again, the Powell Center. This would complete that project. There's 1.5 million that was left remaining on that. Workers' Compensation Fund, this is, you know, obviously this isn't anything flashy that you can look at, but it is a considerable need as we take a look at the workers', workers' compensation fund on continuing to stabilize that account. We have, the finance director recently increased the contributions from the school department that they normally make annually. We manage the workers' comp fund for school as well. It's, it's one, one fund for us, for the city. However, where we're seeing trending take places as it pertains to some new legislation pertaining to presumption laws. These presumption laws has to do with cancer, cardio for police and fire and PTSD. So those are, those are trending. I, I serve on the Maine Municipal Association Board and their workers' comp trustee board and, and we just had a presentation related to this as it pertains to workers' comp. We're self-insured as it pertains to workers' comp, but many municipalities go through Maine Municipal Association. And so what we're able to use as a self-insured municipality is some of their trending data. And taking a look at some of that trending data is certainly demonstrating substantial increases in workers' comp funds as it pertains to these presumption laws. Now, some of them have some extensions that were placed on by legislation, and so they're still being reviewed, some are still being reviewed at committee, some of them are permanent. And so, and we anticipate others to expand as we move along. There's some that do not include communications dispatchers. However, just so you're, you're aware, that is a separate workers' comp account than the city's because Lewis and Auburn 911 Center is a separate entity. But those are funds that eventually get to us through our contributions, our share to the 911 Center. So, so speaking with the finance director, that's an account that I think she's been really trying to increase over time. And so her recommendation was for the $1 million within there. The next one is the Auburn Sewer District. We have, as we move forward with stormwater separation, there's still numbers that we're monitoring as far as stormwater surges that take place. We knew when the new high school was going to come onboard, we were going to see a considerable change with stormwater that exceeds the limitations for what we're able to handle through our system. LOPCA currently is in the process of designing, installing a storage tank for stormwater. And there's a funding formula that's in place as it pertains to the city of Lewiston and the city of Auburn for stormwater and that, the cost for that holding tank. And that will be based on through, every three years worth of data that comes in on what's the volume of stormwater that exceeds our current system. And that goes right into the Andersgagen River. So as we, as we look at that program, we know that there's, there's one area along Miller Street, Main Street, the sewer department and the city engineers know that there's, there's an area in there where it's probably one, one area where it's just that, there's an old system that has, that still has a flow that was never turned off. Because we know, we've been able to identify this area. To do further testing, we believe it'll be about $100,000 to do that. The flip side is that once we close that off, the amount of stormwater surge that takes place drops, drops next to nothing, even on some of these large storms that we experienced over this past summer. We had several over the past summer that we were monitoring. Those numbers will drop dramatically off. The reason why we see this as a priority is that has to do with the storage tank and that could reduce our obligation to that tank if our percentage of usage drops. So that's why we see this as a priority. It's something that I think the meeting with, meeting with Superintendent Broadbent and the engineer, city engineer, I think there's a path forward here, but it's going to require probably outsourcing some of this testing. So that's why we see this as, as a priority. The next one is the Norway Savings Bank Arena. We've had the second floor discussions for quite some time. When that was built, it was only, it was still sand on one of the, one of the rinks and, and that's causing, that's causing some issues there. And so we know that'll be coming up. It'll be a future issue that we'll have to address. This takes care of that. It takes care of, it would, once you put that on, it would take care of the new boards around that new, new floor and, and we got estimates recently that's right around a million dollars. And so, but we know that'll be a future CIP request. That's why we've listed that here. The Apex Training Simulator, this is something within PD's CIP that they've, they've provided. This is, the simulator training has to do with really state-of-the-art system where officers are able to, through a program, engage with different activities. It's almost immediate, actually, it is an immediate response based on how the officer approaches a situation, how an officer gives commands, actions that the officer takes. The controller is able to change the scenario based on the officer's engagement. This is definitely a high-tech level training program. We see value in it. It's been in CIP, it'll continue to move through CIP, so we saw this as something for you to consider as well. The last one is regarding memorial signage. As we identify certain areas or really key locations within the city, proper signage to give those proper recognitions is important. We've done, we've done some and we haven't really incorporated the signage that goes with it. We believe that we'll have some future memorial opportunities that we believe we'll be looking at and exploring, and some of these will come from the naming committee that's going to be making some recommendations. So we put this in here as we want to make sure that, if that's done, we want to make sure there's some funding to make sure that we do the proper signage on those. A request came in at, at the, I think it was our last meeting where a request came in. I think the mayor had, had said, hey, if there's other organizations, now's the time to put your requests in. Andersgagen Land Trust and Project Graduation both submitted theirs. And, and I know the mayor could probably speak more to the Project Graduation and Councilor Staples could speak more to the Andersgagen Land Trust, but if folks have some questions. And I think Andersgagen Land Trust, I think was between 10 and 20, right? And so, so I put the full amount, but it was, the request was between 10 and 20, so. So those are the ones that we were able to identify based on conversations we've had over the last several months, projects that we know are coming up. This is an exclusive list. This is an opportunity for, for you as well, if there's projects that you've identified and really see as, as something to move forward with. As you'll see, if you do the quick math on this, this exceeds the $3,054,028 that I've just shared between the fund balance and the remaining ARPA funds. But this is for, for you to have that conversation and, and discuss. Yeah, yeah, that's not, that doesn't meet that amount. It's just, here's different, different projects and you can decide, you know, if any of these are a part of your priorities or if you have others.
So quick math, oh, actually, I use a calculator, so it's good math. About $3.8 million in total projects for consideration. $3,054,000 in combined fund balance and ARPA unallocated. So you got about a delta of, call it $800,000. Now, the fund balance, just to remind you all, are, it's not to exceed 14%. It should fall between 10 and 14%. If we brought, if we went below 14 to about 13.2%, we'd have the $800,000 to fully fund everything. I will say, looking at, this is again, the fiscal year 2022 audit. For fiscal year 2023, though it has not been audited, there's a meeting about that, that will come out probably summer. But it's, I think it's very extremely safe to say that we'll have another $2 million in available fund balance over the 14% because things really didn't change drastically that much, even though our taxes were flat. We still had open positions and so forth. And again, that's conjecture, but I do think that we are trending in that direction. Any questions? Any thoughts? Danny, you want to, I mean, Land Trust is 10 to 20,000. Project Graduation, real quick, they've run up against a wall. I talked to some school committee meetings after a school committee last week, and they're saying with what happened October 25th, a lot of individuals and corporations have really expended their philanthropical budgets for the year to help the victim support funds and then them going to raise money, which they've done successfully for, God, Project Graduation, when I was in high school, 30-plus years. They've always done it, they are running up against a wall. Their full budget's around 15,000 for Project Grad. They anticipate being short by about nine. So hence, that's what the request is for.
Yeah, Andersgagen Land Trust is a, is a nonprofit that I work with and they've put in a request for $20,000. So they have several properties throughout the city of Auburn that they, they maintain in conservation easements. And 10,000 of this specifically was to do some work for the Sherwood Forest property that's right behind the Sherwood Heights School in New Auburn. And the rest of the $10,000 was to, to help with further stewardship of those properties. It's, it's a, it's a nonprofit that I, I work with a lot, like I said, and, you know, I'd really appreciate if you guys would consider this.
Can I bring it down? First of all, are there any other questions about what's proposed? Then we can have some, did someone raise your hand? You pointed? Oh, I didn't see you.
Not so much questions about this stuff, but, well, it is and it isn't. What I'm getting at is if we're going to have a big pot of money left, some of the money should go for direct property tax relief. In other words, lowering our cost of our mill rate.
So if you look back, we did attempt that with the Senior Property Tax Stabilization Fund, more than half of which went unclaimed. I've talked, Steve, Councilor Milks actually had this idea last week or so by looking at the overall, bringing that fund balance down to 12%, basically taking an additional million on top of this out and then giving everyone with a home sit exemption without them having to apply an automatic check. We did the real rough mouth on this, worked out to about $125 to each taxpayer in Auburn. Without them having to apply home sit exemption, which is the best and easiest definition of residency that we have, it would drop, you know, below that, probably around 12%. We'd have to do the math. But yeah, it's an option. We can do that. Now, applying it to the budget, it's what the city manager does every year with a portion of fund balance. Nothing that we do here really is going to preclude him from doing that. But I think really get a look at, we can't do that with ARPA money. So that can't be just put into the general budget. We can't offset that. But what we have done here, and I think this is a long-term strategy, almost everything we have here, the big, you know, the Powell Center, workers' comp funds, Norway Savings Bank floor, the sewer district, that is in lieu of CIP and at a high interest rate, you know, situation which we're at, that's some significant savings for the taxpayer long term. So that's always a positive as well.
I see all the positives that you're talking about with the ARPA money and what we can and can't use. What monies I want to use is what we're going to take from the, the fund balance. If we're going to lower the fund balance, let's take that chunk, some of the chunk of change and lower the mill rate for all property tax owners.
I think one thing that we could potentially do there is, you know, every year we go into the CIP with the city manager bringing us roughly a, a number that's similar to the one from last year. What we could do is say, look, these are the projects that you said you're going to bring to CIP. If we were to fund them now with the fund balance, we could, we could make the ask that when the, the next budget comes up, that the city manager brings in a lower number on the CIP. I think that would, that would be a reasonable compromise on that. I think that would, that would be a reasonable, uh, compromise on that.
And you can't, and we, over the last six years, this has always been the struggle. If you utilize, um, a significant amount of the fund balance to lower the mill rate, what you're doing is you're not cutting the budget, but you're creating a cliff for the next year. That's why, like on the school side, what we did last week, and I'll say this to my report, we allocated 1.286 million dollars towards, um, three separate funds for perpetual maintenance, curriculum and technology. So it didn't create a cliff, but it also, uh, prevented a mass increase in the schools' mill rate for at least the next three to five years. So that's how we kind of load balance that out, very similar to taking things off their CIP at the municipal level. They just didn't have anything at the school level to take off the CIP at this point.
Uh, really quick question. So if I'm, I guess I'm looking for some guidance here. So on the Powell Center, uh, project number 19, it does say allocation of $3 million and then also the projects for consideration, does it say Powell Center for additional 1.5? Is that a total of 4.5 or is that three, including that 1.5?
Yeah, so, so far, yeah, that's, so that's would be the three, three millions there plus the additional 1.5. And 1.5 from CIP. So that would be the total, the project total is 9 million. 3 million came from the Congressional earmark. Uh, 3 million came from ARPA originally, 1.5 came from CIP, and then the final request is here, a 1.5.
Okay, so they're still short from the nine.
So it's short from the nine for one.
Yeah, for 1, 1.5.
Then we covered the gap.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then also, the second question I had was the Training Simulator, can that be rolled into the new facility or is this something completely different and also be put on the bond?
You know, it's one of those expenses that, you know, at some point to determine whether or not it makes sense to put that on a long-term bond or not, you know, I think that, um, it's a big project, so it certainly, it certainly could. Um, it just would delay, uh, when that, uh, was available. Cause we're, we're a ways out on that, but yeah. But there's no reason, you know, like I said, there's no reason for that to go to CIP if that's, if that's something we want to look at.
Thank you.
If, with regards to the fund balance piece, if we, obviously without lowering the mill rate, we can just give, is there any reason every property tax owner? Why does it only have to be homestead exemption? So what, if we take the whole 3 million and give it all, uh, and not fund, we could do that as well.
Do you want landlords getting that as well?
Yeah, that homestead exemption is a primary residence. I just used it for, to start the conversation, something that we've done before.
Well, not every primary, not every person is taking advantage of the homeowners.
It was just, it was just a way to easily through tax assessing, say, these are the people that live in their house, it's their primary residence, not a secondary or anything. So that's, it was simple, but that's up to.
My thought is also everybody who had a tax increase, based on the revaluation, we would be returning some income, some money back to them without changing the, without changing the, uh, mill rate. Is that what you're suggesting as well?
I'll let the manager talk about how you create a cliff within the mill rate, okay? Um, if you look at this as a corporation, a city, this is a corporate dispersment of excess of funds. I think first of all, you have to decide what is excess of funds. And then you have to weigh giving a check back, um, to individual taxpayers, however you want to define it. I use homestead exemption because it's the easiest, most fair, okay? Then you have to look at the short-term benefit to the, you know, let's, we use this analogy, the shareholders or the long-term. Now, a corporation, as most of us know, you do your capital expenses because you know that if you can pay for that with cash flow versus, uh, bond, you're going to save interest payments for a significant amount of time, which taxpayers pay the interest. So that is a significant savings and it helps depress or decrease the mill rate over time, um, versus that check. Now, I don't think there's anything wrong personally with a, a check of some sort. Um, I do simple math, we took it down a million, you know, that's again, $125 per homestead exemption. That was a math I, I used on, that's what I know right now. So everything else is a little funky. You look at the commercial side, and if I remind everybody about what happened when we did the reevaluation, commercial was at 99% true value assessed to actual market. So what they, they didn't see an increase in their property value, but they did enjoy a tremendous decrease in taxes because the mill rate dropped and that applied to commercial. Okay, and it's a problem at the state level as all the residential values went up and it didn't balance. Apartments didn't, multi-units didn't until just this year, and there is an adjustment on multi-units here in Auburn of 10%, I believe. Okay, so, you know, there's some funky math on that, um, absolutely. So why I say all that is you have to, I think you need to weigh, and this is why we got the workshop, and I just throw this out there so you know all the variables, you need to weigh what on this list, I think, is worthy of investment today or to push something on this list off to, you know, the next council in the CIP process for them to say yes or no? And then look at the total we have, look at what you could have and make a determination after that. Okay, you know, right now that we have $900,000, $905,000 in ARPA that can't be used as in a rebate. Okay, so that's off the board.
Well, not necessarily. Um, depends on how you were to create that program, but I mean, I think you're right because we've, we've done some. I, you know, I think that, um, appreciate the comments, um, that are being shared because it is, you know, it's, you know, it's how you want to move forward with these funds. And you could also, you know, an option that we did not consider here is there's, there's nothing that keeps the fund balance from growing and changing policy. And, and I've asked, um, RKO to provide me with, um, some additional policies that other municipalities have because with the cost of inflation, with the cost of everything that's taking place, there, there could potentially be value to move that, um, that goalpost, right, of that 14% that we're heading right now to 16%. Now, there's not much, you know, talking with, with Casey at RKO, there's not much reason to go beyond that. Um, but you know, there's, there's room there to at least increase that. So that's another option that you have. Um, I think when it comes to what Counselor Gary's suggesting, I think that, um, to administer any program to go back, um, would be difficult. It's, we, we knew what the lift was for the senior, um, rebate, uh, program, uh, which was challenging. There's also, you, you have to thread that needle as it comes to, uh, what are our, uh, what are we authorized to do? If you're going to do that, I would recommend you just wait and do it during the next budget process because that's, that's when the best way to do that would be. Um, but what that does create though, it now creates that, that next year, you're looking at a fund balance transfer of, um, potentially could be 4 million some odd dollars depending on where the budget is. That now creates that cliff that the mayor was referring to, that you now create in that next budget. So you get this shift that takes place with the taxpayer. Like, okay, yeah, thanks, I saw that, I saw that decrease, but now I'm seeing this increase because now that shift, because now where are you going to bring that 3 million in unless you reduce expenditures by that 3 million? These are outside funds, so there's no, it's not like there's an account within our budget that we're going to say, well, we're going to reduce that by $3 million. That doesn't currently exist unless you change, change services that we're providing. So, so those are those things to think about as, as you look to do that. That's why the recommendation that I would have as, um, as city manager would be, take a look at projects that we believe that are going to be future cost to the taxpayer and fund those projects. So those costs, those costs do not get applied in the future. And that's, that's what, that's what most of these, I think, could be, uh, considered. If you were leaning towards, as you know, Counselor Hayes mentioned, how has it been mentioned, the, uh, Powell Center, um, you know, I'm thinking about reporting that, um, Rita needs to do as well, you know, there's, I would make, if, if you're going to make some recommendations, um, it's easier to take the $905,000, um, that's in ARPA and we can have an order that amends the Powell original, uh, authorization to increase it by that amount. That closes ARPA. That means we don't have eight more projects that we now have to manage through ARPA. So if that was one of the ones you're considering, you already have that allocation, I'd recommend just applying that and then put the difference within fund balance if that's your recommendation. So, so just for reporting wise, it's just one that we already have, it's a project we already have. I didn't mention this to Rita, but I'm sure she's going to thank me later for it, but it's just one where it just makes it a little, little cleaner for us. And then the other ones you can decide out of the fund balance, which are, you know, no restrictions for you, no reporting beyond your, uh, your appropriation other than what would be done through the normal, um, purchasing policy and audit in the future.
Let's go through this exercise after Phil said that. Again, to clarify, Phil, the 1.5 is what's needed for the Powell Center, but we could authorize 900,000 from ARPA and then 600,000 from fund balance for the 1.5 total.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So let's try this exercise, start off to the left. Counselors, I'm going to do some hash marks. We're not voting for anything, we're going to do in reverse. Is there anything out here that you want to have, uh, more conversation on and just give me a couple bullet points if you have any on, on this list? And then we'll go around, we'll collect it and then that will prioritize the rest of the conversation. If you, if you're not ready yet, we can start on the right. Okay?
No, I, I think all the comments, um, make sense here. I like, uh, closing out the, the gap on the Powell Center, uh, Workman's, uh, Workers' Compensation Fund. I understand, uh, strengthening that fund, uh, getting those accounts of where they need to be. Auburn Sewer District obviously makes a lot of sense because we're going to solve an existing problem and prevent future expenses. Um, I'd want to talk more about the Norway Savings Bank Arena, um, in regards to the cost, um, the value of that and what it might save and what the future might look, uh, in regards to having to fix that down the road compared to now. I look at all these projects, I think they all have merit, um, but ultimately it's going to fall on us to determine where that fund balance level falls and, and what we fund and, and if we are going to do some kind of dispersal to taxpayers.
So, okay, we're looking at just kind of what you'd have, you know, you said it well, Norway Savings Bank Arena, that's something that deserves further scrutiny that probably can't be decided here and maybe push that off to the, the parking lot.
Yeah, I'd, I'd want, uh, I just want some more facts on, uh, where the million earmark goes, um, the curtain, current circumstances and, and what, what the short-term and long-term benefit is going to be in regards to CIP, uh, CIP future impacts.
Counselor Staples?
Yeah, looking at this list, I think for me, the, the highest priority one here, I think should be the Auburn Sewer District.
Well, yeah, just go, what's, what you, what do you have questions with? That way we can get it around quick though.
Questions.
Questions I don't want, something on the negative.
Yeah, I think the questions I would have would be the Norway Savings Bank Arena floor as well as the Apex Training Simulator. Um, Memorial Signage, I guess I'd like to know a little bit more about what specifically would be used that for, but the rest of them look good.
Uh, yeah, I'll probably say the same. Uh, Norway, Apex and Memorial Signage.
Um, I agree with Counselor Lamar and the others, other counselors on the, uh, the, um, uh, flooring at the Norway Savings Bank Arena. Uh, I compliment the Sewer District, they've done a really good job of the combined sewer overflows and they've really eliminated most everything. Apparently there's this one glitch which will save us money, so that's a no-brainer, absolutely. Um, and I, just to comment on the idea of rebating like 125 bucks to individual taxpayers, I, I'm against that simply because it's an administrative headache. And I recall years ago, the state did this rebate of like 30 bucks to every taxpayer. And then about a year later, it turned out that they did the audit and, uh, they hadn't paid the phone bills so they could meet their expenses. And it was just a mess over a relatively small amount of money. And I, I agree with Counselor Gary on trying to keep cat taxes low and we look at that next, with the next budget, trying to, try to do that as opposed to doing like small
I, I want more on. Yeah, mine would be, I'd want more to explain on the Powell Center because that's a, a lot more money to add to what we've already agreed with. The Workman's Comp Fund, I think that could be done a little bit different than a million dollars. And the Norway Savings Bank, I definitely would want, uh, a laid-out project so we could see what all that money's going to be spent on.
I agree with what most of the counselors have started the discussion on. I disagree with Counselor Walker on the Powell Center because I'd like to see this project off the ground and completed. I would also like to see, which are not on this paper for consideration, is more funding for summer rec scholarships and programs as well as, and I have not talked with anybody at the Powell Center, but seeing their, seeing what they've been giving for groceries and knowing that their load has been increased, I would like to see them get more funding to continue out because I know what funding we've given them is going to come to an end. And there's a lot of families and single people and seniors that are counting on getting these extra groceries every week.
Yeah, I'd like to see an update on, on the status of the project of the Powell Center and based on, I know there's been a lot of stuff, so Mike, I'd have a questions on that? I'm not, not supporting the Powell Center because I, I like it. Yeah, um, I question the, the floor at the Norway Savings Bank. I'd like to have an, really an updated op, you know, full-scale, we put a lot of money into, into that building and so, um, those are the big ones. And I'd like to know, I'm in favor of the Workman's Comp Fund, that makes sense, but I'd love to have a little more explanation exactly how that's going to work because I get it, we're getting legislatively increased our costs. So I think as we allocate that money, it'd be important for us to make, have the citizens understand where this push is coming from, that it's not from us, it's from legislative.
Okay, so I'm just going to go through this, took notes what everybody said. I'm just going to knock out the ones that are just, Counselor Rock, you have a final part?
Yeah, well, you asked us to look at the projects, but you allowed her to add to it. You didn't.
Oh, no, you could add to it.
You didn't say to us, would we like to add to it?
Actually, I didn't allow it, I just couldn't stop her. So, yeah, does it, well, hold on, before, can we just knock out? I'm not even going to talk about that, but we'll come around. Let's just see, there's about four or five things that are pretty good. Everybody agrees one, and then I'll come right back to you, Counselor Walker. So, um, Powell Center, we're going to need a little follow-up, we'll come back to that in a second. Auburn Sewer District, that's a go. Project Graduation, Anders Skoggin Land Trust, full 20,000 or 10,000, which their original request was. Anybody object to the 20,000 mark? Not seeing, okay, Anders Skoggin Land Trust. So one, two, three. Now we had some questions, let's go with the easiest ones first, which was Powell Center. What is the update on the total funding? You said it before, but I want everybody to know what your plan was if this money wasn't on the docket.
Yeah, so the, the total project that continues to be, uh, focused on is, is 9 million. We basically keep shrinking, uh, the building down as costs, uh, continue to come in, but the project, you know, will, the building itself will come in at, at 9 million. When we talked about this before, we talked about, we're breaking this into, um, these $3 million allocations. 3 million was for the Congressional earmark, 3 million was out of ARPA, 3 million was out of, uh, CIP. Last year we did half of that and that was the 1.5. The plan was to do the other 1.5, uh, in this upcoming CIP. And so, uh, so those are those three buckets that we were looking at. Uh, so this would shift it out of the future CIP to now.
So that's a pretty significant.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, plans are moving right along. I don't see Derek here, uh, but plans are moving, moving along well. I think that the goal is that they'll be breaking ground in the spring and that project will be, uh, completed. 12 months, thank you. So, um, and that, everything of the, as it pertains to the, uh, the full court, basketball court, all, everything else inside, that's all staying o- on track. We may have had to narrow some of the space around the court, but I think we've done pretty well with, they were able to bring some of that back in and move things around. And so, uh, that's still all on track.
I think one of the questions I would have on the Powell is how much has our community helped to put towards the money you need for this? I mean, I know fundraising is always tough, but the, the people in this community are going to have probably one of the best facilities that they're ever going to see built. that they're ever gonna see built in, uh, you know, in the area where it's really needed. So, uh, I would hope that we could put a, put a number out there that what we could raise in our community for this project, uh, to help us with this number.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I don't know if you wanna talk about that.
I mean, I, I raised 50,000 so far. I'd like to put that as something that was, you know, an endowment fund, sustainability fund. So we always had money in there to take care of maintenance, funding programs, and so forth. I'd like to see the next council take that and go out there and raise the money in addition to the 50,000 I already raised, um, to get, to make that sustainable. That answers some of your questions, Councilor Walker.
I could add a brief comment on PAL Center. It, it, it may not be strong in terms of the capital fundraising, but in terms of the ongoing operating fundraising, it's phenomenal. Exchange Club and members of the club, individuals step forward, whether it's volunteering time or donations, turkeys, whatever it might be. It's, it's very well supported, so I think that will continue, and that's one of the strengths of it. And I think the neighborhood, having a, a bigger, better center, uh, will be beneficial, and you'll see some support that sort of spins off from that.
It would be nice just to put a ribbon around this one. We've been working on it for two-plus years. That's, you know, I think to address the next one, which is Workman's Comp, on top of that, that is a fairly new concept to this council, and I think what we should do is, we should not fund this and let the next city council look at really diving deeper, and we just don't have enough time. PAL Center, we know. I mean, we've gone through that multiple, multiple times. But Workman's Comp, we have it, and that might be a good one to punt out to the next city council. We never wanna, you know, shirk our responsibilities, but this deserves a lot more time than what we're gonna have left in this term.
Something to consider is maybe punt half. Do half, 500,000. Is it, you know, it's, it's the area that probably, I know Brian and I and, um, our legal team and, you know, it's, it's an area that we, we have some concerns about. But if we wanna punt half, I'm fine with punting half.
What, what level do you keep in that fund?
So, I, we've done well at bringing the account up. Um, I think I probably need to get the finance department to give you some of that information, maybe at the next meeting. Um, we, we continue to try to increase what we bring in, um, but through, you know, we probably have pending right now, I think we probably have six or so presumption cases that are pending. I don't, Brian, you have more information on that?
Correct, yes. We have, uh, anywhere from, we have four that are working their way through the process and two that we believe are gonna be filed, uh, shortly. Um, and I know historically, going back to, uh, mid 2000s, um, the Workers' Comp Fund had been pretty dramatically, uh, depleted, um, and has been a significant effort to, to bring that back. Um, and, and, uh, through some of the analysis that our HR team has done with consultants, the fear, I think, as we've shared before, these presumption cases, it only takes one, um, to dramatically spike, uh, what we annually pay out, which is anywhere from 80 to 100,000 dollars, uh, but one presumption case could be anywhere from 3 to 600,000 dollars after we've done the negotiation. So I think that's what, uh, yeah, what, what keeps us up at night.
Yeah, I get, I get. I think there's a lot more information that we literally don't have enough time to dig into tonight, or in three weeks. I'd like, I mean, if, if anybody dissents, I think we take the city manager's recommendation and fund 500,000 on that. Any dissenting on that? Then, uh, let's have the order be that. Now, on that same note, going down the list, there's a lot of curiosity about Norway Savings Bank Arena and the floor. I remember, Leroy, help me, four years ago, we talked about this, Belinda, four years ago? And I, and again, I could be misquoting, but I thought it was a $250,000 cost, or half a million at that time. Things change, and, but that is something, I think, to Steve's point, Councilor Milk's point, it's a new thing. We let the next city council put it on their agenda in January, February, and do a full analysis and look at the ROI on that million dollars, and whether or not, because remember, we're not killing the fund balance at this point. This isn't the end-all, be-all. These are just immediate things that we wanna close the books on. They can still appropriate it from the fund balance, let's say, in February or March. There's nothing saying they can't, after they look at it and make a decision, right? So if you guys, if there's no one dissenting, I'd say we take the million dollars from the floor off this list for orders to be, of orders for our next and last meeting.
They're not gonna use the, the million dollars on the floor right now anyway. It's hockey season.
Right, yeah, that would be a mess.
The, the only thing I would say about that is just lining up the contractor. Um, they've done extensive, uh, negotiations with the contractor that would most likely be used. So currently, it's tentatively slated for end of June, July. Not, nothing's been signed, just putting it in schedule. So if it's not moving forward, which is obviously very much council's purview, then it would move to the next year. So that'd be summer '25 at the earliest.
I just honestly, when's your, uh, drop dead date? When's your deadline on response to proposal?
Uh, it would need to be in the next, probably, four, four weeks.
I believe they have a meeting on December 18th.
Yeah, I, I'd like to say that kinda like Phil said, I'd like to see us, if we're gonna do anything, cut it in half 'cause I think they could make this happen if it came down to that, that dollar. I mean, we did this years ago at Pettingill Park, and we, we redid that whole floor and everything by using local people to get it ready for the big people that need to come in and do it. So I, I think, uh, if you don't mind, I'd like to suggest that we put 500,000 at least aside for that.
Is there any, anybody object to that? Anybody support that?
I can support that, um, with respect to, uh, Councilor Walker's experience in the, in the Auburn Park and Rec and, and like processes. Um, I'm, I know it needs to be done. It's here for a reason, um, but it's age-old. Necessity is the mother of all invention, you know. It'd be interesting to see what they can do with, with half that amount, or at least put those funds in place for future use.
So, quick math, if we allocated a half a million dollars to the floor, and then still, the, the new council's gonna have to make a decision on the balance, that would drop us below that anticipated or original 3.8 million. Uh, remember that delta I said, of 800? We're now in the green, if you were in the black, 200,000 dollars, okay? So, we're good, and we're holding tight at 14% right now. We still have 200. I'll open this up to Leroy. Leroy, you had an idea of additional spending?
Well, I know there's a project we've been trying to get off the ground for a long time, and it's the fountain that's at the Todd Lot. That fountain is a 100-year-old fountain, and it sits up there in the corner doing absolutely nothing. I would like us to find a place downtown, bring it down here and get it done. I, I'll bet we could get that done for 100,000 dollars and, uh, have something really nice downtown for people to see instead of it sitting up there in the corner, just, uh, turning brown and gray and green. That used to sit at the Auburn Water District many, many years ago, at the bottom of Gulf Hill, when Gulf Hill was a dirt road. So that's how old it is.
I don't even know what to think about what that might cost. I just don't know. Anybody? Venturing any ideas to move and relocate? Have we looked at that in recent memory?
Not that long ago. I think we, we ran some numbers, uh, to look at moving it at one point over to, um, Lake Grove Park. Um, and I think we got some preliminary numbers, but I don't know. I'm looking at John or Brian to see if anybody has any thought. But we, we can, we can provide that. Just, just to make sure that we're clear on numbers. So if we take out the 905,000, 745.25 out of that total of, uh, ARPA, and then we drop that 594,00254.75 remaining for PAL, we do the 500 for Workers' Comp, 129,000 is what I'm hearing, the 100,000 for Sewer, the 20,000 for, um, Project Graduation, and the 9,000 for Project Graduation, the 20,000 for, um, Anders Skoggin Land Trust, and then, um, the 500 for Norway. Um, that now leaves you at 1,019,283.
1,019,000?
You had 2 million... We shifted that 905, now we're at the 2 million, so now that leaves you at 1,019,00283.
And I'd like to comment...
I can give you the amounts. Yeah. Yeah, it's 594,0254.75 to get to the remaining PAL, the 500,000 for Workers' Comp, the 129,000 for those three smaller buckets, and then the 500,000 for Norway. If you, that's now at 1 million, I'm sorry. So that now brings your total, sorry, to 1,019,283, and then that would come off the 2, 2,0148,283. So that's the running total right now, is the 1 million.
Bottom balance is about 1.6. Yep. Uh, because you got, yeah, you've got 600,000, I'm rounding up, for PAL, half a million for Workers' Comp, half a million for floor.
No, I'm correct. I'm correct on that. You have 1,019,283 remaining.
Oh, remaining?
Remaining, yeah, yeah.
So, that gives...
That gives a future council a million dollars to divvy up, per se, between Workers' Comp and the, the floor, if it's valid. So we're not leaving them holding the bag on anything unfunded mandates. They've got the money. We've initially kicked it off. We've solved the PAL Center and some immediate, and we could probably throw in there, um, an additional 50,000 dollars or whatever the quote could be. That fountain is gorgeous, and it is a piece of Auburn history, and it should be shown to people, and whether it be at Lake Grove Park or, you know, someplace else. So I think Lake Grove would be gorgeous.
It needs to come downtown where people really see it.
Yeah, um, but maybe we can actually have some sort of estimate on that one, too, at least for consideration in the next meeting's orders, if the council's good with that here at workshop.
Yeah, we can tee it up for you at the next meeting, and then you can decide, uh, which way you wanna go with it. Um, and we can try to get some rough estimates. I think the only other remaining thing was, Councilor Gary mentioned about the food component. Um, and not that we're not, you know, if you think about the food program that we initiated, we initiated it because we weren't running any PAL programming. So that staff shifted to run the food program. PAL programming is continuing to increase as we're getting back to normal. Um, and so we're using staff, and we're trying to, trying to stretch staff to still do some level of that food program, which, um, I think ends the end of June? Oh, December.
Yeah, is it, yeah, December was the, uh, remaining food that was purchased with the end of the money from June.
But, so, I mean, I think there's, you know, if you, if you'd like to apply some more funds, what we would do is, we would work with staff to see how best do we distribute those. Uh, Councilor Walker and I have been talking about some of the program that's been happening with Age Friendly. Um, and so, um, so if you, if you wanted to apply the 50,000 for now, tentatively, we can talk about 50,000 for the water fountain and another 50,000 for, uh, the food program, we could work to, um, look at how do we, how do we distribute that in a way that's not pulling programmers, people who are running the program, uh, doing a food distribution. That's, that's the challenge.
From what I'm understanding, it's not exclusively, uh, staff time. They are pulling in a lot of volunteers to help get their bags labeled and bags filled with the groceries and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, we would, we would certainly wanna continue with that volunteer group, but it's still requiring a staff allocation.
And we, we talked about this when CARE's money ran out, too, if you remember correctly. Transitioning from city-sponsored managed program to finding third-party, uh, volunteers, i.e. churches, nonprofits, separate locations, and then funding their efforts as it's easier and more efficient to fund a third party than it is to do it ourselves and utilize that staff time. If, Miss, yeah, Miss Manager, just, let's get it on the agenda. If we need to workshop this a little bit more next Monday, maybe we can.
Yeah, I, I think we'll, actually, I think we'll be able to do it, uh, under the orders. We'll, we'll tee this up. The council can always add any additional orders as you see, um, but we can make amendments in any way. And, um, 'cause right now, we're anticipating not having a workshop, um, at the next meeting. There's really, uh, for this existing, uh, term, there's really nothing, nothing more to, to workshop because workshops are usually for something at your next meeting or a future meeting. And so, um, so the thought is that we, I talked to the mayor earlier today, the thought is that we probably won't have a workshop, um, but we'll put it in under the orders. Um, what I would ask Mayor is if we can, um, 87, um, 87 Mill Street, um, if we could do that when we go back in...
Absolutely.
Back into the council meeting and have that be the continuation of the workshop.
No problem. That should only take a couple minutes, correct?
Yeah, John, John's here, and we'll be able to get that together.
Perfect. Um, well, the workshop's now over. We'll reconvene council chambers in about six months. The workshop's now over. We'll reconvene council chambers in about six months. Okay, that, folks, thank you for joining us tonight. Now, we're going to actually do a continuation of the workshop for a few minutes. We've got John Blay here to talk about the garage at Rowley's Diner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. This is a, an issue that, just to kind of step back a little bit, this is an issue that was established in 2012, so it's been, been a little while. Rowley's Diner and the city gotten into an agreement where they swapped land. There's an existing structure that is on the RK Properties lot that basically is where the new trail is going to go. That is from the, along the Little Anisgarn River and it connects from South Main Street to Anniversary Park. So essentially what we're doing is we've got, they, they put out the project out to bid. They've got $30,000 allocated from CDBG money and demolition funds. And then the second phase of that is, is to build a new structure. And the new structure, the monies, basically, we're going to be asking to use the allocation from the comp plan. So we're just basically asking the council for that particular piece. And if there's any specific questions, we can, we can try to answer them.
I, I would just add, Mayor and Council, related to this, is we've had this building looked at. There's a considerable amount of concern as it pertains to the structure. The city, because of the boundary line, the city owns half of this building. And that half of the building has some major liability issues as far as its structure. So that's why we, we've circled back on this. We've made this a priority. It's, it's a commitment that was already previously made, as John had said. And then we're, we're holding on to, or at least executing, rather, our obligation that was negotiated back in 2012.
Yeah, we actually looked at, because we just talked about, the initial agreement said that we're just going to take the rear half of the building out. And it just didn't make any economic sense as we had, you know, contractors come in and take a look at it. It was really cheaper to just to, you know, demo the existing structure. So that's, that's where we landed there.
Okay, so is there any questions from the council? If not, this will appear in order on our December 4th meeting. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you talk about how much it's going to cost to demo it, do you have a cost estimate of how much the new building structure is going to cost?
So, that's a good question. I've been working on that. I've actually been working with Ken Blaze on, specifically on that and what, what he would like and need. Currently, there's a 2,000 to 2,500 square foot structure there. We're looking at something that's considerably smaller. Something around 672 square feet. Somewhere right around 28 feet wide by 24 feet deep. We really are looking at the setback requirements and the restrictions from having that trail along the river and then the environmental concern from the river as well, keeping that setback. So we're working towards a design that he likes. We're really looking at it being in the Form-based code and having the ability, not saying that the city is, is funding this, but having the ability to potentially have a garage and storage base that we're taking away, but build it in such a way that sets him up for success if he wants to, you know, convert that into a one-bedroom apartment or a studio apartment or additional storage on the top. But we're working on getting that number down as, as low as we can at the moment and making it, but making it also look aesthetically pleasing and fitting into the, you know, the local, the park and the, the area that it is. It would have exterior stairway. We're looking at exterior stairway to get to that second floor for what, what would be storage or maybe in the future, additional space for, for Mr. Blaze.
Okay, is there any other questions?
Yeah, continue.
Hold on, if we can go to Council Staples, then whenever he has a turn, we'll come back to you. Council Staples?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you could elaborate on the timing of this trail that would be going there after the demolition.
So I think it's a, you know, we, we need to make sure that we can get the comp plan funds allocated for this particular project and execute the project. But I wouldn't see, you know, I think that that's something that we probably would need to put into our CIP budget and, and get that allocated. So I'm thinking probably a year or two down the road after we get the, the structure, you know, rebuilt and everything. This first phase, you could call it the first phase of this project completed. Then we look at connecting that trail from, as I said, from South Main Street to Anniversary Park.
Council Staple. Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When you talk about the trail, are you still going to leave the Sullivan Park or is that going to be taken away?
Nope, Sullivan Park is going to stay, as far as I know. Yep.
Because on your drawing, you've got an awful lot of parking spaces.
As far, you know, all of that land is going to stay as Sullivan Park along the river there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? No? I think we're good. Thank you, John, for this work. It's long, since 2012, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, 11 years is too long to wait for anything. Okay, we're going to move along on the regular city council meeting agenda. We have the minutes for the November 6th meeting. Any corrections?
Motion approved as written.
Council Staples, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Council Haas. All those in favor? Okay, pass this, 7-0. We're going to move to communications, presentations, and recognition. Start off with communications. One thing I want to make everybody aware of, we just received notification that the Senate has passed a $3.9 million congressional discretionary spending bill for Aniver, excuse me, for the Riverwalk. It's $3.9 million coming to the Riverwalk now. Congress has not yet to act. Okay, the House is still in, doing what the House does. So we'll figure that one out. But that's a huge hurdle. And I'd like to thank staff that worked really, really hard on this. Council for having a pretty good vision on what they wanted for recreation and downtown amenities. And I, of course, want to thank Senator Collins and her staff for helping us get that in. And just so, as a point of reference, the most you could ask for is $4 million. So that's a, that's a pretty significant amount of money. So knock on wood and hopefully the pass will pass it. So that's all the communications I have at this time. Council Staples and just working around. Anybody have any communications?
Nothing for me today.
Counselor Walker?
I don't have anything at this moment.
Thanksgiving?
Well, they can't sign up anymore, so we're definitely going to have Thanksgiving though at the senior center Thursday.
But don't worry, you can't sign up anymore. So, Counselor?
Just offering congratulations to the Blue Devils soccer state championship team across the river.
Hertz is kind of joining you, but, Counselor Gary?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Continuation. What are we going to do with the homeless in a warming place for them to get in for shelter?
Do you want to report on that or report or comments?
Well, I can discuss it now. I think that we, City of Lewiston, City of Auburn, and two other service provider organizations in the city, between the two cities, did apply for estate housing funds that were available. It was roughly around $800,000 that I think we requested. If you've read in the paper, I believe it talked about the fact that New Beginnings was the, the one organization that received some funding. I think total, there was around, you know, don't quote me, but I believe it was around 1.4 million that they had available and I believe they received over 4 million in requests. Now, we have, our staff and our team are working with the state to continue to look for some other funding options. We'll continue doing that. I would, I would imagine that when we hear back from the state, if there's a path forward with that, we'll be bringing it back to the council for consideration if there's something that, that's going to be required from City of Auburn or space that would be used by the City of Auburn. So I, there's still, there's a team that's working on it. They're having conversations. You know, our business and community development director toward the state, looking at different centers that are currently being run, evaluating those. You know, we continue to do that. We are, the team, the field team is out and they are continually working with our unhoused to find housing. We, we talked about just one success story that took place, just, just, I think it was over the weekend. So of identifying someone and determining what their needs were and finding, finding housing for them through resources that are available. So our, the team that's in the field, they're working every day on that and they're meeting with individuals every day to seek housing opportunities for them. So that work is underway. We're working through that. The bigger approach to this would be to secure some of the funding that is required by the state. The state only allocating 1.4 million dollars is, to me, a complete disgrace on what the issue is statewide. When you have communities like Augusta, like Auburn, like Lewiston, that are now currently feeling that impact that's coming from some actions that Portland is taking, that, that we're seeing that impact every single day. So, so Counselor Gary, know that the team is working on it. We're trying to seek out some funding. We're hopeful that the state has said we want to work with you on this. And I think we have a path forward. But we, we need to try to secure some of that funding.
Respectfully, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but the issue is now at hand. As we drive around the city, we see more and more homeless people standing on the corners because all the rents they can find are the very highest rates, their market rates. They're not.
Counselor Gary, this is communication. This isn't debate. If you'd like to, if, in the next meeting, if you want to actually present with another counselor this to be a topic, please do. Okay? So moving on to communications, no more communication except for this. It's in front of us. Light the Park, Friday, December 1, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Santa's coming to town. It's going to be a great time in New Auburn, Anniversary Park, 6:00 to 8:00, Friday, December 1. Hakoko, free hats, free mittens, music, and the tree is going to, Christmas tree is going to be lit up. So that's always fun. So that's again, this is December 1, Friday, 6:00 to 8:00. Moving on to open session. First open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to step up to the podium, give us your name and address and let me hear comments. Approximately three minutes. That'd be helpful.
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. There is an item which does appear on the agenda, but about which there is no public comment or a public hearing period scheduled. That's item five under the new business, the TIF and related credit enhancement agreement for the Main Street project. I'd be perfectly willing to.
I'm sorry, so, excuse me, Mr. Beal?
Yes.
There's public comment on both. You said order four or five? Doesn't matter.
Five.
I'm sorry?
Five.
It's there. We have a public comment, period.
I didn't see it on the agenda that I printed out yesterday.
It's there.
Okay, thank you. I'll defer until that time.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak? None being, I'll close the open session. We don't have, we have no unfinished business, so we'll go on to new business. Next is order 146-11202023, approving the mass gathering permit for the New Year Auburn event to be held on December 31st, 2023, in Festival Plaza. Public hearing invoked. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Counselor Moore, and second by Counselor Walker. Open this up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak about New Year's Eve Auburn? The fifth annual New Year's Eve Auburn with great bands, music and food. Great. Okay, none being, we'll close it. Bring it back. Counsel, any comments about the great food, drinks, band? Yes.
Thank you kindly. About a month or so ago, we got an email from a lady with a family, well, a family here next door that says, is there some sort of code in place for how loud the music can go? Because she was saying it was so loud, it was shaking her place. And some of the, it's what, it's not just, it's just not a New Year's Eve party, but all the different events down there that are similar to the New Year's Eve one. And he, she was asking, is there a way to turn some of it down?
So, you know, I think that we, we certainly did receive that. I think it was also, as it pertains to fireworks, I believe this was also in that discussion. We are working towards, you know, alternatives. And then I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll receive some sponsorship that'll assist with that. And then also this, you know, this event will be done by 10:00 p.m. But I think that we'll work with, we'll work to make sure that, that we're not, this is why we do the mass gathering permit, because that gives you the authorization to go beyond ordinance. But I think it's important for us to also be respectful for, for those residents. That's why, you know, over time, as we talked about this, the end time is 10:00 p.m.
Because her most complaint was the not appropriate language her kids were expect, experiencing and how they couldn't go to sleep till the events were all done. And the fireworks didn't enter in. It was just the loud music shaking the whole house.
I've talked to that family before. I've offered to put them up in hotel rooms. They've declined. So in previous years. And I, I will remind everyone that this is a downtown of a major city. And, you know, I, I just, this is probably, there's only three times throughout the course of the year where it gets really loud. And it's, we are downtown. It's Festival Plaza. So, you know, people need to be considerate of that. Any other comments? None? This time I'm asked for vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None being, pass this, 7-0. Next is order 147-11202023, allocating funds from the American Rescue Plan Act. Funds for the public safety wellness program, which we workshop last meeting. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Counselor Moore, and second by Counselor Staples. Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and let me hear comments. So about three minutes. None being, we'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, any debate?
I apologize for not making the last meeting. I had a cold, really bad cold. I didn't want to infect other council members. Particularly Ryan and Belinda being right next door to them. But I was curious about this, if there was a procurement involved with this, if there were other competitive proposals received or if this was just a one, one-off. I'm in support of, of a wellness program. I just didn't know if other proposals had been received.
I'm going to ask the Chiefs probably to come forward. They're the ones that are kind of working on this project. I know, Chief, I'll let you go ahead and speak to it.
I'll speak to the cancer portion. About three years ago, we actually solicited bids. We had gotten assistance to firefighters grant for another level of cancer screening, and we did a comprehensive, I don't want to say a quoting process, but we got financial costs from our occupational health provider and several other people that come in to do cancer screenings. So, we had some comparative numbers for the cancer screenings. But the other thing that drove us to this vendor is because of other fire department involvement with cancer screenings, the Maine Fire Chiefs Association is working on having this vendor go across the state at multiple locations. And so, our ability to kind of parlay with a state effort and get to be one of those sites was a driver for the cancer screening vendor that we chose.
And as far as the wellness for the cardiac with Sigma Tactical, that is a sole source project because the testing that Sigma uses is also very proprietary with some of the breakthrough research that they've done. And also, Sigma is working with other departments in the state, much along the lines of the cancer screens, to come out and do several departments in the area all at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Whiting, good? Good, okay.
A question, Mr. Manager. Is this pre-screening, we've got some legislation that's, it's assumptive, you're assumed to have costs, you're assumed to have the causational, right, cause of your illness. So, if we adopt a program like this, that's going to give us some, hey, we're addressing this on the front end, so as we are dealing with claims, it's going to help us in the long term from a, does it have that potential financially?
I think that the, you know, the goal here is that we would never get to a claim, that it would be preventative screening that could then allow for action to take place by that individual and their, their physician to address that early on. So, it does not get to that point of a 20-year veteran within the PD or fire that now has a full claim that's being worked through. So, so that's, that's part of it. I don't know, Brian, if you had something to add?
Yeah, absolutely. I think the other piece is that it gives us a really good baseline. Some of the factors that they work through when looking at these presumptive laws are family history, your chronology, your lifestyle, all of those things. And so, by having a really thorough baseline, it helps us down the road. And as the city manager just spoke about, by doing these at the appropriate frequency, it does allow us to proactively address any, any findings so that they're able to, to return to work as well. And so, there are multiple aspects to this that are extremely beneficial.
Yeah, so I would ask that, you know, for this, this initial funding, I think it makes sense. I think, you know, if you're going to go and do this at a yearly basis or at a frequency that's, you know, more, more frequent, it would make sense to me that, you know, you would bring some data to the council showing exactly what did we gain from this first screening the next time you ask for another round or whatever of funding? It would be really interesting to see what are we gaining from this and how is it helping us? And especially, you know, going into the, the last workshop agenda item that we had where we discussed a potential adding to the workers' comp benefit pool, how is it helping with that? And, and, you know, just getting some data around that I think would be really good. But I mean, I think, I think this initial funding makes sense.
Yeah, thank you for that. One of our initiatives, both at the state level as they come around to do the cancer screenings, but also locally, is that we get aggregate data around how many findings they might have and be able to, we're actually hoping to use that at the state level to help drive legislative change with regard to trying to get further funding from the state as well, to show that it's an occurrence, there's data behind how much it's occurring within the firefighter and police officer population, and try to get state legislation that can help potentially with some supplemental funding for future screening. So, our, our whole goal is data-driven, build the history, but we don't even have a baseline at this point. So, thank you for that.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to ask for a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? None being, pass seven zero. Next is order 148-11202023, allocating funds from the American Rescue Plan for the recreational program scholarships. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Gary, second from Counselor Milks. I want to open this up to the public for comment. Anybody in the public like to comment about this? This is a scholarship fund and a program that allows victims of October 25th and their children to actually attend rec programs for free until they have maturity, for the public's benefit. Any comment? Bringing it back here to the council. Counsel? No comments? I think this is a long-term, honestly, the first long-term benefit to the survivors of October 25th and their children that we've seen. And I'm very, very proud of the manager for bringing this up, and I'm proud of the council for doing this. This is one of those long-term things that will have immeasurable, immeasurable benefits to our community. Okay. Ask for a vote at this time. All those in favor? Opposed? Pass seven zero. Next, order 149-11202023, approving the Miller Street discontinuance. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Staples, second from Counselor Moore. I'll open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public like to speak? If not, I don't think so. I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, again, this is, we've had public, we've had a public hearing on this. This is Miller Street. It's down by Rogue Block. This is going to allow the next agenda item actually to get built. So, it all plays in perfectly. Any comment? Any debate? None being, lots for a vote. And show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? None being, pass seven zero. This next order is making me hungry. It's order 150-11202023, approving the Tax Increment Financing District Number 29, 186 Main Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Moore, Counselor Walker, on the second. Okay, I'll open this up to the public for comment. If any members of the public would like to comment, please step up, refresh our memories. This has been going on for, when I first talked to the owners of Mason's in a cold call I made and said, you need to look at Auburn, and he's like, well, yeah, and I want this spot to Great Falls Construction coming to the table. This is a long time coming. So, I want to thank everybody that's been involved. So, especially Great Falls. Mr. Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. I don't speak either in favor or against the project. I've heard the explanations at previous council meetings, and certainly am not opposed to the project. But I do have some questions regarding the credit enhancement agreement that goes with it. There is a credit enhancement agreement that is proposed for a 75% share to the developer, and there's a recitation that there are off-site improvements required in connection with the development of the project, estimated to approximate $7,230,000, $7,325,000, excuse me. But it does not indicate whether those improvements are public or private. There is an exhibit that's attached to the document that refers to public project costs, but at least as I printed it out, that's blank. So, my question is, are these to be projects that are, or improvements of a public nature that have already been done by the developer or that are proposed to be done? And what are those public improvements? Those are my questions. Mr. Holmes may be able to.
Sir, well, we're on the meeting. We'll get, we'll get there. Thanks. Appreciate that. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak on this? None being. Bring it back to the council. Counsel, before we talk about public and/or the CEA, is there any other questions you have? Glenn, if you could, Mr. Holmes, come on up in case we have something for you. Any questions on this? Questions, comments?
Yeah, I just, I'm supportive of TIFs, TIFs in general, but when we're talking about credit enhancement, I'd like to see a basis for that. I'd like to know what the reasoning for that is and what the need, if there's a compelling need for the public to rebate back money directly to the developer.
So, the overall project is a $7,325,000 project estimate based on what we've looked at to this point. The actual credit enhancement back to the developers, $950,000. Basically, when we, like we do for every project, we have a performer. We work with the developer to go through what needs to be done and what needs to be done because of the situation for the particular site that we're on. As I think you all know, this is a very small postage stamp lot, but in reality, there was a tremendous amount needed to be done. Some of that work was done ahead of time because of the incentive funds that were put forward by the council a long time ago. And so, therefore, John Blaze was very instrumental in working with the contractors in regard to the environmental cleanup of that site. We were able to get a brownfield grant. And the rest of this money really comes down to the, in, the higher the normal cost trying to build a building on that site due to its location and the way it needs to be built, and based on what we, as a city, wanted to see there and everything else, that was the number once we went through the performer that we came to rest on as what was needed to make this project viable. Basically, I always do this as a but for. But for the city bringing this money to the table and doing the work we've done to get this project done, there is no way that any investor would ever move this project to the next level. So, that's really what the $935,000 is for. Basically, we are front-loading this at 35%. Obviously, after the, you know, it caps out at 950, so depending on what this winds up being for a building, actual for tax purposes, could take, you know, a little longer, a little less than what we thought. But we believe that within, between now and 2036, they will have easily recaptured that money and then anything after that for the rest of the 30 years. As you remember, at the last meeting, we had TIF 10 Amendment, which pulled this and a few other sites out of the TIF 10 because the TIF had only had a few years left in it. So, therefore, this was a way for us to be able to extend this over a larger period of time. Helps the developer, helps us, helps the public safety building and all kinds of other things. As far as, you know, so as far as the off-site improvements, there are some things that I think John could probably speak to better than I as far as what may need to be done off-site for that. But it's all taken into consideration as a package of what it takes to make this project viable.
Does that help? You good? Thank you.
One other question. Do we have an estimate on the number of employees that the brewpub will be employing?
We do. It's in here somewhere.
It was a 287-page packet, so I.
Yeah, exactly.
I read thoroughly, but I missed that.
Yeah. I mean, it's not, I mean, obviously, it's not a, you know, 150 employees we're talking about a brewpub. I believe the number's in the, in the low twenties, full-time and part-time. There was like, I think, five full-time people, and the rest were all part-time. And obviously, the housing above that.
15-unit housing, yeah. Okay. Is there any other questions on this? No? Okay. John?
I can just add a little bit to the, the piece on the, the work that's happening, the public improvement piece. It's, we talk about discontinuance, but there's actually a relocation of Miller Street, and so, they're, they're building that out and the associated parking with that. So, there's, there's a fair amount of work there that's happening that's a benefit to the public. In addition to that, there's some additional curb cut work that's happening on the front end, on the main street end, that provides ADA accessibility to the, to the building. And that's a critical component with the, you know, the planning board approval part. That, that already happened.
Thank you.
One quick question. I'm assuming it's an elevator building just because of the tight site it's on?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Counselor Staples?
Yeah, Counselor Whiting asked for the number of employees. I just happen to have it right here. It's 23 full-time positions and 15 part-time positions.
Oh, oh, much better than your estimate, Mr. Holmes. Don't open a restaurant.
It's a long.
Okay. 23 full-time, 15 part? Outstanding. Okay. Better than five, yeah. Okay, very good then. So, at this point, I'm going to ask for a vote. And I should note this by now. All those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? None being. Passes seven zero. Go break some ground quickly, huh?
I guess I'm not moving yet.
Yeah. Next is order 151-11202023, approving, approving the Tax Increment Financing District Number 30. This is Diamond Point Storage. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Staples, second by Counselor Walker. Open this up to the public for comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please step to the podium and state your name and address. None being, we got someone?
Good evening. My name is John Cleveland. I live at 183 Davis Avenue in Auburn. I have some questions regarding, regarding the credit enhancement agreement aspect of this particular project. There are six of them. I'll go through them for you, and at some point you may wish.
This body can't answer your questions. You can make statements.
I have questions that I don't understand, need clarifications on.
Yes, sir. And that's, this body can't respond to your questions. So, just make statements and understand that we can't.
Okay. I'll drop the question mark off of my questions. I'd like to know what the term of the, I'd like to know what the term of the credit enhancement agreement is. I read the, all of the material, and it indicates that the credit enhancement agreement, in one section, 50% of the TIF revenues for 15 years. In another section, it says the credit enhancement agreement is 20 years. And then in the third section, it says that the credit enhancement agreement is 12 years. What are specific public benefits derived from this credit enhancement agreement? It doesn't list them. They're rather ambiguous. So, what are those public benefits? What are the total expected costs for the public, these specific public benefits later to this project? And in the credit enhancement agreement, my understanding is that it's a total amount not to exceed $750,000. Is the credit enhanced, my statement is the credit enhancement agreement stated to provide the full $750,000 to developer, or only the amount expended by the developer for the eligible public improvements if they're less than $750,000? And how will the city document what the actual costs invested for the public improvements be for this particular project? And finally, my suggestion or statement would be a TIF and a credit enhancement agreement are two separate items, and I would suggest that they be voted on separately.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak during the open session? None being, we're bringing back to the council. Glenn, at this point, just give us a brief overview of the program.
So, as I hope you all know at this point, this is a very difficult lot within the city. So, this is up where Union, Turner, Center Street all come together. So, a number of developers over the years, is my understanding, and even a few since I've been here, have looked at that. And it's always come down to, if you have anything that's going to have a significant amount of traffic, it adds so much to that already busy intersection. It's nearly impossible. And the cost to redo that intersection is, you know, more money than I'm ever going to see in my life. This developer came to us, it is for a public, for a self-storage building, a very large, very nice self-storage building. Once constructed, it would have very low traffic. They were willing to actually purchase additional land so that their entrance would be down further away from the lights and have a right-in, right-out only. So, very accommodating for the city to be able to not have to either have them spend a bunch of money or have us spend a bunch of money to redo an intersection that has been there for a long time. So, that was the proposal. Once they get into it, looking at environmental, this got a fair amount of environmental cleanup that needs to be done. It also, then, when we looked at it, it's right along the river, and some people started talking about, would it be nice to extend the river walk up beyond where it goes now? So, what this does is, this credit enhancement, there's roughly $300,000 in here for them because of the, some of the additional costs that we've asked them to incur, some of those off-site improvements, as well as some of the environmental cleanup to help us clean up a lot. There's been a lot of problems for a lot of people for a long time. The rest of the money actually is going to be set aside, and when we decide to move that river walk up, that money would be available for them to pay for it. They're already in the process of designing it, so that we'll have something to, based on the specifications that we provided them, and they've come up with some numbers about what they think it's going to cost, and it's going to be in this ballpark. And then obviously, it's a matter of, do we want it to be lit, do we want it to be paved, and all those other things to be done as we move forward. So, only the amount of money, which is, I believe it was around $340,000, would go to the developer for the work that they're doing on their site for their project to make this all work. The rest of the money would be set aside so that we would be available if and when we chose to. At the same time, if the city chose to build that on their own, because we got another congressional earmark, that money would come back to the city.
Is there any questions specifically to Glenn on this? Is there any questions specifically to Glenn on this?
Just a question on the other TIF downtown. You made a good compelling argument. There's employment of people, and you've got a difficult site that's expensive to develop. I appreciate the difficulty of this site to be developed, just because of the need for one-way traffic and the cluttered intersection up above. My question, though, is, is it necessary to do any credit enhancement at all with this? This is self-storage. Those things are making money. Sometimes, within a few months, they paid for themselves. Maybe if this is a single building and not the typical sprawling, you know, cheap metal frame.
This is a multi, it's a multi-level building.
It's expensive building, yeah.
I, I mean, it really comes down to the additional expenses. I mean, their, their performer is healthy, but at the same time, they, you know, need to make a certain margin, margin based on their investors, because people are investing in that type of it. And this allows them to put a project in our city that will cash flow and produces a significant amount of tax revenue in the future.
There's an interesting component to housing in this that people don't necessarily tie in. The ability or the number of self-storage units, especially downtown self-storage units, in proximity to housing, allows housing to become smaller. And off-site storage, which means construction because, costs drop, and it becomes more affordable. So it's an interesting look, and I think this is an extremely positive, just from a housing, all the studies I've done on housing, that when you have a higher-end, multi-store, self-storage unit coming to your city, that's indicative of future hoped growth. Okay? Because they're looking at the future growth in the marketplace. So I think it's a very good dilemmas test, if you would, to what we have in the future.
If I could add just one more piece, is that this is a critical piece to our comp plan in terms of tying in recreation to this area. It creates that real important link. And then, as Glenn alluded to, this site is a real difficult site. We've, we've looked at many different types of developers coming into this location, and this, you know, low volume in terms of traffic really works in this particular site on that right-hand turn situation there. And it lends the ability to develop the site into something that, you know, can create some tax base for the city. So as, for the planning department, it really hit a lot of the points that we were really striving towards.
Counselor Staples?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm in support of this. I, I just want to ask the question, though, before we go too far down the road. Does it make sense in any way for the city to be in charge of creating that trail, if, if they would allow us an, an access easement on that land? And, and therefore, it sounds like it's about 400,000 of what the CEA is going to cover. Would it make sense for the city to just do that on our own and to lower the CEA? I'm just asking because I, I think it's worth exploring.
There was a, a long debate, debate between the departments and the directors on which was the best way to do this. We are getting an easement across their property, period, as part of this. So therefore, the city will have an easement across the property. Right now, we're still working out where that easement will lie. There's some current easements already in place, which, if we should lay on top of those, or if we should be around them. So that's going to take a little bit of time before we get to that point. It really came down to making sure that it got done. And as long as that money stays in that account, and we can simply point to somebody and say, "Go build it," it probably will.
And could you, could you kind of speak to the, the readiness of that to be connected to the rest of the, the Riverwalk? I mean, what's, what are the steps that's going to get us there?
So the biggest step that I, that I'm aware of is that we're currently in conversations for licensing for the dam. And the piece across their property, we're trying to tie into that. So again, that would be a piece that will have to happen.
This time, I'd like to ask for a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Sorry, Rick? Was that opposed? Okay. Pass is 6-1.
Thank you.
Next is ordinance 24-11202023, amending the Auburn zoning map to rezone all areas in the low-density rural residential or, or our rural residential zoning district within the Lake Auburn watershed to the low-density country residential zoning district. This is a first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Staples, Counselor Moran, and a second. I'll open this up the, for the public comment. Any members of the public that would like to speak, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. As a reminder, this shifts the one-acre minimum for a new residential to a three-acre minimum for a new residential, within the watershed only. Nobody from the public would like to speak? I'll bring it back to the council. Counselors, are there any debate on this? Again, as you think about this, this is just a part of the comprehensive plan and strategy that really should be either passed or not passed in unison, because there is interplay with the ordinances that we're about ready to have first readings on. No questions? Okay. At this point, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary? Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Order passes first reading, 6-1. Next is Order 26-11202023, which is amending the Auburn zone, zoning map for parcel ID 289-001, 289-002, and 277-026, from agricultural resource protection to general business. This is the first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Moran, second by Counselor Staples. Open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? If so, please come up to the podium, give us your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes. None being, I'm going to bring it back to the council. Counsel, just to break it down kind of colloquially, it's all in your agenda packets, of course, but this is written reference to the gravel pit and the modified line based upon what the multiple studies and law pack actually has recommended. Are there any questions or debate on this? Counselor Staples?
Yeah. I, I spent a lot of time reading about this one over the weekend. And to be honest, when I started reading, I wasn't sure how I was going to vote. I think what really kind of swayed me in the direction that I'm pointing is, is the, the idea that as its current use, the gravel pit is, is, is going to do what it's going to do. They can, they can keep digging until they keep, until they get to the water table. There's not a whole lot we can do about that. If we were to rezone this, we allow Planning Board to adopt some best practices in some of the management of this site. And, and I go back and forth about general business, not general business. I feel as though general business allows, allows the developer to do something that would allow him to financially be incentivized to actually do something to this property, to a point where he can make, you know, he can make some money even after a significant investment. It's not an easy issue for me. It really isn't. I, I feel as though, you know, you're, we're given the opportunity tonight to say yes to this or to say no to this. And we're not given the opportunity tonight to, to look at other alternatives. I feel, given the options that we have tonight, given the information that we have, this makes the most sense to vote yes for this.
Debate?
Yeah. I disagree. I think this is being overzoned. I think suburban residential allows a developer a substantial opportunity to develop in a safe manner that is less intense. And given the public's horror and their reaction to the rezoning we did in the past, and even with the, the line change, I just think it's excessive, and I won't support it.
As a point of interest, I do want to bring to light that this was, this change, almost mirroring the map, was actually a recommendation in the 2010 comprehensive plan as well. So it has been in the books for about 13 years, and it was general business recommended there as well. So. Any other debate? If not, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
Definitely no.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Pass is 5-2. Next is ordinance 27-11202023, amending the Auburn zoning map to reflect the actual drainage boundary based on existing topography of the land and known groundwater flows. This is a first reading. And do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Hawes?
Okay.
And second, Counselor Staples. Open this up, up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment? Please step up to the microphone and give us your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. None being, I'll bring it back to the council. Counsel, debate? This, again, that interplay I was speaking about, this goes back towards the rezoning efforts and mirrors the, the watershed boundary as defined by multiple studies and reflecting what main drinking water said was best practices and the most conservative approach. Is there any debate on this, pro or con? None being, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote at this time.
Counselor, Counselor, Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
Yes.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Pass is 6-1. Next is ordinance 28-11202023, amending the Auburn zoning map to reflect the actual drainage boundary based on existing topography. Wait, hold on.
Ordinance 20.
I'm sorry, did I skip that?
Ordinance 20.
I was reading. Uh-oh. Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. I need, I need another agenda. This is, uh, wait. Yeah. Okay. So, trying to get me on my way out, aren't you? Okay, big secret, folks. Listen, I have a cheat sheet, okay? Sometimes a cheat sheet might not be accurate. Let me go back. Next is ordinance 28-11202023, amending the Chapter 60, Articles 12, Division 4, Lake Auburn watershed overlay district pertaining to animal farms, agricultural buffer strips, septic system buffer strips, and private sewage disposal systems and subsurface wastewater standards and requirements. This is a first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Staples, second for Counselor Hawes. Open this up to the public for comment. Any members of the public like to speak on this? Please step to the podium and give us your name, address, limit your comment to three minutes.
Bruce Ryu, 85, Mary Carroll Street, Auburn. If you, this particular ordinance, I think, takes into consideration not so much the gravel pit, but the land around Lake Auburn in the watershed. So if you took a particular parcel of land in the watershed today that has no structures on it, it probably is forested, probably has a field with tall grasses, and nature is doing the filtration as, when it rains or there's any kind of event, and the water, you know, flows down to the lake. And it's done a pretty good job throughout history. So by making this change here, we are now going to take that same parcel of land, we're going to put a big building on it, big driveway, big roof with water running off, a big lawn. And although it's going to have a better septic system than it would have had under the prior ordinance, you will be adding pollution to the lake. There is no question about it. The nature, nature is doing a great job now, but by changing this and adding development, development around the lake, you will be adding pollution. I just wanted you to keep that in mind when you place your vote.
Anybody else in the public like to speak on this? Okay. One thing I do want to mention before we enter into debate, as a reminder about it, John, correct me, a year and a half ago now, low-impact design standards? Okay. So we passed, in this council, a series of low-impact design standards in the Lake Auburn watershed and the Taylor Pond watershed, so that any new building built would be capped at percentage of disturbed land and have to mitigate all phosphorus runoffs. John, would you like to add just a little bit of a reminder for the council on that?
Sure. So the, the council actually strengthened it quite a bit. We went down to 200 square feet. So any, any development in the watershed, we're currently doing it right now. We're working with landowners between 200 and 600, and then after 600, they have to have what's called a phosphorus control plan, specifically done by environmental engineer or civil engineer. So the main, the main piece about this low, low-impact development is that it's, it's point source treatment. So, meaning the treatment is happening on the site, it's not leaving the site. You're getting the water into the ground, the stormwater into the ground as quickly as you can, and treating that water. You do it with varied ways, with rain gardens, dry swales. There's a whole bunch of different types of buffers. Oftentimes, if there's enough land, we put land in conservation easements, and that water is channelized, and it's put into what's called a level-up spreader, and then distributed through a buffer that is never to be changed, and it's forever and a day, and it follows the next owner. So it's attached to their deed, and it has to be recorded. These are something that, this is something that we're doing all the way down to 200 square feet now. And we work with landowners every day to make sure that this happens, and we're implementing it.
Thanks, John.
I can say that we do it.
Yeah, I remember Counselor Whiting's the one that dropped it down to 200. I didn't realize how small that was. So, so we have that there. Again, that just helps you in your debate. Open this up to the council. Counselors, are there any debate? Counselor Staples first, foremost?
Sure. Hoping, John, can kind of elaborate a little bit. I watched the planning board meeting from last week, over the weekend, and there was, there was some discussion in there that I, I found particularly useful, that we don't have in the packet here, that was a, a study done, I believe, by an intern last summer, showing the impact of the build-out. If, if we were to have this septic design, how many, how many buildable lots there are in the city compared with, sorry, the septic design coupled with the, the decrease in density that we just passed, what is that compared to current-day state? And then also, I wonder if you might be able to talk a little bit about, does this new septic design protect the lake better than the current septic design?
Yeah. So that, that's kind of two questions and one there. So this, for this really to work well, it was really a collaborative approach over, you know, a two-year period that we had to combine the, the lot size, meaning increasing the lot size, going from one acre to three acre. So we essentially, we had, and, and don't quote me on the number, we could, we could look it up, but we cut that number in half. So if we had today, if we had current today standard, and we kept it, we have 80 lots available. Now, we, we changed the zoning, so now we have 30 lots available, regardless of the, of the change. Just by changing the overall lot size from one acre to three acre, we really make it a lot more difficult to do that. And, you know, the, the, the septic system itself and the design is really something that, you know, I, if I could say that, you know, if there's one thing that feather in our cap and, and, you know, this whole bodies in, in terms of water quality protection, this really hits a note that's been a 40-year issue. So we have, you know, over 270 septic systems that are existing, and we have the ability now with this new ordinance to address those. And, and those 270 systems, there's different scenarios, right? So there's the scenario where we install it to the 36-inch limiting factor, and we set that system one foot below, you know, where we're that real, that real organic layer that we really need to attain the phosphorus and the nitrogen. We're, we're lowering that bed. I see them built in the ground, and I scratch my head, and I ask my code enforcement officers, "Why are we doing this?" I said that three years ago. Why are we doing this? That was the first thing I did. I went into Eric's office. I said, "Why are we doing this? Why are we setting those beds in the ground?" I had worked for a side of an iowater for 10 years, a very respected engineer in the state, and we never installed anything like that. And I was, I asked the question. And this was the best way to address that. So we're bringing those beds above grade, not only, so we, we might, we might be saying we have 12 inches, but now we're adding an additional treatment. If it's only a 12 inches limiting factor, we're adding another, another two feet. Those are some certain circumstances. We have a lot of good soils here in the city. You know, we worry about pump stations and cost to individual landowners. If we only have, if you have 24 inches, we're setting that system on, on the surface, right? We're getting that good treatment with that duff layer and the organic matter, but we're adding only a foot in that, at that particular point. So this is an absolute benefit in terms of treatment. So this is an absolute benefit in terms of treatment. You know, I can't, I can't say it enough, from a professional level, from designing many septic systems, engineering septic systems, we had David Roke in here talking about that. I went further than that. I went to the University of Rhode Island, I had a pair review. She picked up something very important in the design of our ordinance, where we didn't add the media, and we, we did that lastly here. We added the media, so now we have strength in the teeth of the language that our code enforcement officers now can point to and say, "This is the type of material that we have." It's very specific, and it has scientific review. They are in agreeance that this is a great way to treat, you know, subsurface gray water, essentially.
Okay. Hold on, please. Unless there's a direct follow-up, I'd like to give everybody else a chance.
Yeah, that was it, actually. I, I just want to commend the staff on this, because I, I'm not a scientist, I, I don't have a background in this, and I really appreciate the work that you guys have done to educate us, as well as to make this ordinance as good as it can be. So thank you for that. I, I was going into this, I, I couldn't, I couldn't make up my mind, because honestly, I don't like, I don't like adding to the number of buildable lots, but when you couple it with such strong protection of the lake through a better septic ordinance, I think it makes sense, and I think that there's a lot to be gained here, and, and we can hang our hat on the fact that we've done our, our part in protecting the lake. Thanks.
Well, I'll echo that. I mean, this has been something that's been going on for 20 years, so thank you on that. Is there any other debate on this or questions?
No, I'd just add that I'm in full support of this, and I think going forward, we need to go and address the 270 septic systems that are existing in the watershed that are built terribly. And so I'm glad we're doing this, because it's the right thing to do.
Counselor, uh, Moore?
Yeah, I want to thank you, John, for all of your hard work, and Counselor Staples and I had talked about this. We were both on the planning board when the initial report came out from F B Environmental. Came into this with no foregone conclusions. Myself, I'm not a scientist, but I've learned a lot throughout this process. I may have a note here from our last workshop, or workshop on October 16th, that one of the most compelling pieces of evidence I had was the expert testimony from Mr. David Roke, that, his testimony along with your personal experience, and then the subsequent reports from the multitude of environmental engineering firms that have been providing information, updating with our modeling, providing new inputs. This is a pretty easy decision for me, and I thank you for all your hard work.
Any other comments on this? Mr. Manager, you had?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor and Council. I would just want to make sure I share with the council, I did receive correspondence from the City Administrator of Lewiston. That document was sent to legal to review before I brought it back here. The correspondence from the City Administrator of Lewiston was that supportive of the ordinance changes with, I think, two, two provisions, both that the staff are, are working on. I will make sure that that's available in your packet for the second reading, so that you'll have that.
Very good. She did vote for it on law pack, too, as Lewiston's rep, which is very, this process has been good, and maybe a little longer, and should have been dealt with back, you know, 10 years ago, but I'm glad it's finally done, almost done. So with that, I'm going to ask Clerk for a vote. Roll call, please.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Staples?
Yes.
Counselor Gary?
No.
Counselor Whiting?
No.
Counselor Hawes?
Yes.
Counselor Milks?
Yes.
Counselor Moran?
Yes.
Passes five-two. Okay, next up is the last open session of the night. Members of the public are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business that's not on tonight's agenda. Please step up to the podium with your name and address, and limit your comments to three I see no one for the last open session. I'll close the open session. This time, reports. Mayor's report. One topic I need to report on, and it's important especially for members of the council that are going to be moving on and to the next term. We had a school committee meeting on Wednesday. Much like tonight, we actually had orders to spend down about 1.286 million dollars in excess of fund balance. Let me just tell you what's going to go on in the very near future there. Their fund balance by state law is limited to 5% of their budget during COVID and to, and until next year, that cap has been moved to 9%. So we spent down 1.286 million dollars, and I'll give you that breakdown in a second, but that's, gets us to 9%. They're going to have a significant multimillion-dollar fund balance in the upcoming fiscal years, namely because we're budgeting for teachers that we can't hire, teachers that we don't need, and those budgets have to be moved. So that's, you know, in an adjustment or flux, so it needs to be paid, you know, very, very strict or close attention to. That 1.286 million, I worked as Chair of the Finance Committee for the School Board on the following three buckets. Set aside $500,000 for technology upgrades. That's going to prevent a CIP expenditure. It's also going to prevent operating budget cliff that might happen when those are needed to be purchased, tech, computers, laptops, so forth. $500,000 dedicated to facility maintenance, that's on top of the 250 or 300 we already have, but these are specifically for specific parts of the high school that were never addressed or in the initial budget. Dugouts for baseball and softball, and landscaping. We never had any money set aside for landscaping, so now we can cover that and make sure that high school is perfectly funded, and it's done correctly. And then $286,000 for curriculum. Believe it or not, up until just a couple of years ago, Auburn School Department did not have curriculum. So we have now funded full curriculum throughout most of the grades, got a couple holes left, but this is a seed and enterprise account, if you would, and we seeded it with 286,000. It should continue to be funded, probably to about 50,000 to 75,000 a year, but this is going to ensure that we have money set aside in five, six, and seven years for curriculum upgrades when needed, so we never don't have curriculum in the future, or hopefully don't in the near term. So that's where we spent that money. Now, that's great. Here's the start of the budget season, the superintendent gave a proposal outlining some of the cost centers, notable changes, how the process and timing is going to work. They start their budget before we do. Here are some important things for you all, for us all to remember, actually. One, we commissioned a full facilities audit by Harriman Associates and a partner for energy efficiency. Those results are going to come out next meeting. That we're looking at millions and millions of dollars of deferred maintenance, not in the last three or so years, but over the past 20 years, and 30 years, actually, that are going to have to be addressed. That's one. Second, projections based upon census numbers up until 2020 show, and the superintendent stated this, but did not get specific, that the decisions to close several neighborhood elementary schools are going to have to be made. She said schools, she didn't list which ones, I didn't ask. That will also be presented in the first meeting in December, along with the overall report, because they did do those projection analysis. So these are things that I think everybody needs to be aware of. They are hard decisions that are going to have to be faced in the next terms. That is my report. Hold on. That is my report on school board, which is really the only thing we did. Is there any other reports from committees at this time? None? Okay. Mr. Manager?
Nothing further.
Okay. At this done time, we have no executive sessions, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Staples. Counselor, that one, Milks? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.